Get started. First of all, I would welcome everyone to a public hearing held by the Town Row, Town Board in relation to Local Law 6 of 2021, specific to the town's water ordinance. And... Before I open it up to the public comment, just wanted briefly specify that this proposed local law would establish rules and regulations for the use and operation of the Town Consolidated Water District and further setting rates for capital costs and operation and maintenance costs. And as indicated earlier, upon adoption, this will become Local Law Number 6 for 2021. So at this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice of hearing in the record.
Town Row Notice of Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Local Law. Notice hereby given pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, the public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town Row on November 9th, 2021, at 6:45 PM at the Town Municipal Complex located at 351 Reynolds Road, Maroni Mark, for the purpose of considering the adoption of Local Law Number 6 of 2021. If adopted, Local Law Number 6 of 2021 would repeal Chapter 145 in its entirety and replace it with a new Chapter 145 to apply to the Consolidated Water District. Written comments on Local Law 6 of 2021 can be submitted to the town clerk up and through the time of the public hearing. A copy of the proposed Local Law Number 6 of 2021 can be obtained at the Row Town Municipal Complex and on the town's website that was published on November 3rd.
Thank you. And has the clerk received any official testimony?
No.
So we have not received any testimony in the written form. This time, I'll ask if any member of the public wishes to be heard on proposed Local Law Number 6. You want me to briefly talk about it or not? Sure, you can, for the information of our residents, that would be helpful. Yeah. So we will have Special Counsel Lee Ryan, who has been working with us on the consolidated effort for our water districts, and he's going to provide a brief overview of what this local law would entail.
Thank you. I'll be personally brief. What this law does is codify rules and regulations with regard to the infrastructure construction of water districts and sewer mains and lines. And it also codifies for you what we previously have done with the joint consolidation agreement and the final order and determination by this board back in July when we consolidated the various water districts. And the local law also allows you, the Town Board, in the future to, if need be, amend rates, whether for O&amp;M or for capital, by resolution, as opposed to amending a local law. There is a little bit of work that needs to be done in the future, which is more technical in nature in terms of type of validating, you need work for the system, the type of type of hybrid, but that is more of an engineering and departmental exercise. That's it. Great, simple form.
Thank you for your system. Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. And so at this time, I'll ask again if any member of the public wishes to be heard. What's that? Yeah, let me just go to Zoom and see if there's any member of the public. There is no member of the public online. So we have no members of the public that wish to be heard either online or in person, and there has been no written testimony submitted. So at this time, councilmen, who wish to be heard?
So I was looking, just going through this under Section 21 maintenance repair. Section 21, sub B, to the leak current service line, our shop was caused to be repaired from cuts to the equipment, take back such repair two days, but no, our water source is discontinued until such repair is made. And then I want to go to 25C, protection service components. And I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing here, but... And sub C, upon discovering any leaks in the water service pipes, any pipe should be decided, prepared, staffed, and following, the department should notify the user of such leak or require such user to be authorized to make necessary repair there to within a period of two days from the date of service of such notice. Such notice should be either served personally or subsequently on the terms requested upon the year of the owner. Shall make such repairs pursuant to such notice, and after expiration of the set three-day period, the department will be authorized to make such repairs at cost therefore. Including later material costs should be added to the water charges due from such owner's claim to, shall be enforced in the same manner as payment for water supply these such users. And I could be wrong, but it looks like one thing is saying repair in two days is turned off, or repair in three days, or we move it.
It's probably all say three.
They should both say three. They should say three.
Or two.
Two or three is up here.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, when I look at it, it's like, okay, are we just going in, you got three days or two days to fix it and we'll turn it off, or we got two days to fix it and we'll repair ourselves?
Well, it's going to be three, depending on what you want. Two or three, and it should be, in my mind, an initial attempt to be made by, should be, the repair should be made by the department.
Should be made by the department.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that's the one.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned about going on private property to do it.
We're talking about private property services. So it would be on private property. So unless the code allowed it, they couldn't fix it?
No.
So the code would allow them to do it within that three-day period or not?
Okay.
But they can't just go and be nice and fix it. It's actually a responsibility of the community to commit a service.
Okay.
So this gives them three days to do it.
So both should be said in three days, and we can turn the water off and...
If the owner doesn't want to repair it, then the department can at the owner's expense.
Correct. Can, okay. The department should be authorized to make such repairs. Okay, so I got it. So I guess it should just be changed to two or three days for both of those.
That depends on the board.
Okay.
Your point about six.
Okay. I think that'll go.
So we're still in the public hearing in relation to proposed Local Law Number 6 of 2021. Does any other member of the public wish to be heard at this time?
Let's see here. I don't believe anybody's up, right? Oh, let's see. No, there should be three attendees. Nobody's raising their hands.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on proposed Local Law Number 6? Hearing none, attend, motion to close the hearing. So second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're doing this in the meeting because we did it last...
Councilmember elect. So you know what, this is still on. Let me pause this.
You all set, Liam?
Yes.
All ready? Okay, when you start, I'd like to welcome everyone to a regular meeting in Row Town Board for November 9th, 2021, and ask the clerk to please call roles.
Councilmember Hogan?
Here.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Van Tassel?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Secret advisor, who stands?
Here.
And ask that everyone please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, everyone. Item one on the agenda is approval of minutes, and we have several sets. We can take them all together, we can take them separately. We have the minutes of the regular Town Board meeting for October 12th, we have the minutes of the October 20th budget meeting, and we also have two hearings that were held on October 26th, the first for Local Law Number 3 and the second for Local Law Number 4. And finally, we had a lot of meeting on that day, so whatever the board's pleasure is. Is everybody present?
I was not in the room.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adopt, approve the minutes for October 12th. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I have extended.
All right, motion passes. Next, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes for October 20th and the three sets from October 26th. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second item on the agenda is our customary COVID-19 update. Just briefly, in Saratoga County, we currently have 22 individuals that are hospitalized. Of that number, 15 were not fully vaccinated, and remaining seven have been vaccinated. The percentage of breakthroughs in the fully vaccinated population in the county is presently 1.6%, and the percentage of breakthroughs hospitalized that are fully vaccinated in our population is 0.07%. A little closer to home, here in the Town Row, we presently have 68 active positive cases. In the village of Soplin's Falls, we have 11 active cases. And just briefly, I'd like to provide an update on the percentage of our population that's vaccinated. As everyone is aware, vaccine is now available for children aged 5 through 11. Previously, it was only available to those aged 12 and older. And the percentage of the population that are aged 5 and older is presently 81.6% of the county population. Specifically, we have vaccinated 168 kids in the age bracket 5 to 11 with one dose, and that does not include today's vaccination clinic where approximately another 100 more doses were provided. Individuals that are aged 12 and older, the percentage that have received one dose is currently 88.1%, and the number that are fully vaccinated is 82.1%. Percentage of the population 18 and older that have received at least one dose is 88.9%. Those that are considered serious complete is 82.7%. And then the important number here is those aged 65 and older, 99.9% of Saratoga County residents have received at least one dose, and 92.1% are considered serious complete. Additional information, the upcoming COVID-19 vaccination clinics for children aged 5 to 11, and booster clinics for seniors aged 65 and older are as follows. Today, we did an accounting at our Public Safety Building. We offered the Pfizer vaccine for 5 to 11-year-olds. We also provided the Pfizer booster vaccine for those 65 and older at the Galway Fire Department. November 10, Pfizer Vaccine Clinic will be held for 5 to 11-year-olds who reside in Saratoga County between 2:30 and 5:30 PM at the Saratoga County Public Safety Building. Registration is required. Also, on the same day, the Turner Booster Clinic for those aged 65 and older is available between the hours of 9:30 and 12:30 at the Saratoga County Public Safety Building. Registration is preferred, strongly recommended. There's limited same-day walk-in appointments that will also be available. Vaccines are free, therefore there's no proof of insurance required. Just a reminder, for more information, you can visit Saratoga County website at www.saratogacountynewyork.gov/covid. And you can register for any clinic. And Saratoga County provides free COVID-19 vaccination clinics and booster clinics at the Public Safety Building through a partnership of private businesses across the county. And for the additional information, you can call Public Health at 518-584-7460. Item three on the agenda is Local Law 5 of 2021. We had previously held a public hearing on this local law. I don't believe we received any written or oral comments entered into record. And at this time, I think that I would entertain a motion to move forward with adoption of Local Law 3. The board would like to do that. There's some... Counselor?
Go ahead.
There are some steps that we need to take beforehand. Do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. As we do with all of our local laws, we have before you the seeker forms, parts one, two, and three. I have taken the liberty of going through part two and indicating that the adoption of a law, which is the action, has no or small impact. As we have been asked, I am happy to go through questions one through 11 and have the board respond, or if the board is comfortable with how I have a bid out that one through 11's answers are no small impact, then the board can go through part three and issue a negative declaration. What is the board's pleasure?
I'm trying to accept the one through one and part two, moving on to part three. That's kind of major.
Then is it the board's decision that there is no significant impact with respect to this local law?
Yes.
And is it the board's determination that we wish to issue a negative declaration with our seeker?
Yes.
And as with our prior local laws, that negative declaration is within the resolution that we have.
So we'll agree with the result. Just before she does that, just want to highlight what the purpose of this local law is for members of the public, and what we're doing is changing the income threshold under the Town Row, section 130-2B. The income of an owner, the combined income of owners must not exceed $24,000. Previously, it had been $17,500 for the income tax. You're immediately proceeding state-making application for the exemption that pursuant provisions 467 of the real property tax law. There's a sliding scale of what that exemption would be, ranging from 50% to 5%. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the proposed resolutions.
Resolution, Town Board, Town of Monroe, subject adoption of Local Law 5 of 2021, amending Chapter 130, Section 130-2B in the Code of the Town of Monroe. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Monroe is considering the adoption of Local Law Number 5 of 2021, which if adopted as proposed, would amend Chapter 130, Section 130-2B of the Code of the Town of Monroe. And whereas the board finds that the adoption of Local Law Number 5 of 2021 is in the best interest of the town, and it is necessary to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of town residents and property owners, especially the senior citizens of the town. And whereas the board finds that the adoption of Local Law Number 5 of 2021 is a necessary and proper exercise of authority by the board. And whereas the authority for the enactment of this local law is found in Section 10, 1I of the Municipal Home Rule Law. And whereas pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law, the public hearing on the proposed adoption of Local Law Number 5 of 2021 was properly noticed in the newspaper and posted, and was duly conducted on November 4th, 2021, at the Town Municipal Complex. And whereas the board has considered the public comments made at the public hearing, and whereas the board serving his endangerment secret, is listed action under seeker, reviewed a short environmental assessment form and determined that the action does not present any adverse environmental impacts. And whereas after thorough review and deliberation, the board proposes to adopt Local Law Number 5 of 2021. And whereas the attorney for the town has prepared the necessary documents for filing this local law with the Secretary of State, including the text of the law itself. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby adopts Local Law Number 5 of 2021, which amends the law as stated above, and be it further resolved that the board adopts and authorizes the filing of negative declarations. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the town clerk and attorney for the town to make such minor modifications to the local law documents as they do necessary, and thereafter are directed to execute and file the said documents as required by law, and to take all of the necessary action for the promulgation thereof.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? No, I'm just, I'm going to take this one on the books. Nothing's been updated.
Since nine years, yes.
Long time. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is proposed Local Law Number 6 of 2021. It's in relation to our water ordinance. We held a public hearing earlier this evening and received no testimony, either oral or written. Public hearing has been closed. And at this time, I'll have Counselor Unproven, unusual.
Well, actually, during the public hearing, Councilman Hogan had identified a change that he was going to make, and we need to amend that for...
I'm sorry, if you have conversations, could you take them out into the hall?
Sorry, excuse us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
Councilman Hogan?
Yes.
Can you identify again where in the law you had a question?
21B.
21B.
Stage two is there, and then 25C, stage three is there.
And what is the board's pleasure? I know that special counsel, Bill Ryan, did speak to you about this during the public hearing, and I don't know if you have any further questions for him, or if the board wants to tell me if we're changing it to two or three.
My right.
Is one better than that? I mean, three, I would take three.
I'm all clear.
Three.
My right.
So it'll be three in 21B and 25C?
Correct.
Are there any other minor changes that the board thought was necessary to make? Given that that is merely just a consistency change, if it doesn't appear to be substantive, that's what we have to do, we have to start the public hearing over again. So at this point, just like we just did with the Local Law 5, we go through the seeker process. Again, you have before you seeker, same question, or I label all of them as no or small impact, I'm happy to go through one through 11, or we can do what we did before, and can advise that you're comfortable with accepting no or small impact of one through 11, and then issuing a negative declaration, that there is no significant environmental impacts through the adoption of law.
Okay, yeah, I'm comfortable with it the first time, accepting one through 11.
So is it the board's determination that the adoption of Local Law 6 would have no significant environmental impacts?
Yes.
And is it the board's determination therefore to issue a negative declaration?
Yes.
There is a resolution before you that has that, the negative declaration within it along with the adoption of law.
If Kirk, that clerk has copied that, I would like to read that.
Resolution, Town Board, Town of Monroe, subject adoption of Local Law 6 of 2021, repealing Chapter 145 in its entirety and replacing it with new Chapter 145 of the Code of the Town of Monroe. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Monroe is considering the adoption of Local Law Number 6 of 2021, which if adopted as proposed, repeals Chapter 145 in its entirety and replaces it with a new Chapter 145 to apply to the Consolidated Water District. And whereas the board finds that the adoption of... And whereas the board finds that the adoption of Local Law number six of 2021 is in the best interest of the town, and it is necessary to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of town residents and property owners. And whereas the board finds that the adoption of Local Law Six of 2021 is a necessary and proper exercise of authority by the board. And whereas the authority for the enactment of this local law is found in section ten one I of the municipal home rule law. And whereas pursuant to section twenty of the municipal home rule law, public hearing on proposed adoption of Local Law number six of 2021 was properly noticed in the newspaper and posted, and was duly conducted on November ninth, 2021, at the town municipal complex. And whereas the board has considered the public comments made at the public hearing, and whereas the board serving as lead agency for this unlisted action under seeker reviewed a short environmental assessment form, and determined that the action does not present any adverse environmental impacts. And whereas after thorough review and deliberation, the board proposes to adopt Local Law number six of 2021. And whereas the attorney for the town has prepared the necessary documents for filing this local law with the Secretary of State, including the text of the law itself. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby adopts Local Law number six of 2021, which amends the law as stated above. And be it further resolved that the board adopts and authorizes the filing of negative declarations. And be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the town clerk and the attorney for the town to make such finer modifications to the local law documents as they deem necessary, and thereafter are directed to execute and file the said documents as required by law, and to take all of the necessary action for the promulgation thereof.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and announces. Thank you very much for all the work that went into that. It was an extensive process, and we couldn't have got there delivered away without the assistance of our special counsel, William Ryan, and engineer for the town engineers that are involved. Thank you very much. Well, thank you guys. Team effort. Just make sure we get all the signatures together. We're just ready, guys. I'll show some of them. Next item on this evening's agenda, item five, adoption of the 2022 Town Board. And I do have a prepared motion, whereas the Town Board held a public hearing for the 2022 Plenary Budget on November fourth, 2021. And whereas the public hearing was held in accordance with the New York State municipal law, so be it resolved that the Town Board adopts the 2022 Plenary Budget as presented at the public hearing. So if the board is ready to entertain a motion to, or entertain some movement of that motion. Motion to approve. Second, any discussion?
Again, thank you. It was all involved, it was all in process. Did a great job, our expert.
Great team, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and announces. Item six, I have, I think board members received capital correspondence from the town zoning administrator, Jim Martin, in relation to the individual that we just hired for the clerk position in that department. There has been a conversation between the clerk's office and the Ling Department whereby Katrina Flexon would be willing to be the planning and zoning board secretary. However, a motion previously doubted by Town Board made the hiring of the deputy town clerk predating on the fact that that individual would do the job for one year. So it's not as easy to just switching it over. It's going to require either rescinding or amending a previous resolution and then moving forward a new resolution. So I wanted to bring to the board's attention and see how I would like to handle it.
Whatever the cleanest way is to do it, would we have to have a resolution number that we would rescind, change the wording?
So the resolution that addressed this issue back in August of this year was made by Councilmember Hogan, seconded by Noonan. By Councilmember Noonan, approved unanimously, essentially appointing Barbara Bartlett as deputy town clerk, deputy receiver taxes, and deputy registrar with a salary. And the appointment date will be provided to the Town Board by the town clerk. And Ms. Bartlett also agrees to perform the duties of the planning zoning board secretary for nine, one year. Resolution is 2021 dash two six two.
So would we just amend her hiring word that says, and remove the part that?
Yes, that would be the cleanest way to do it. If you don't want to rescind the entire resolution, then you have to do two separate resolutions to hire the deputy clerk position, and then add that job portion to the planning zoning position.
Okay. Just taking some notes here. So let's see if I can do this. I'd like to, sure. Let me make a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty-one dash two six two, which was the appointment and hiring of Barbara Bartlett for the deputy clerk position, at which time she was hired to also be the planning zoning clerk. Is that the right, is that what she is?
Secretary.
Playing zoning secretary for a minimum of one year. I would like to remove the minimum of one year from her hiring detail. Did I cover that enough?
Is the planning and zoning secretary portion only for the one year, or was the appointment for one year? Just the planning and zoning? Okay. Yeah, just remember for one year.
So that's, that's our motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries and announces. So that would then require, for, this be. So I would make a motion that would include that Katrina Flexon, clerk of the Town of Monroe, building department service secretary of the planning board, in the zoning board of appeals, and received a stipend that exceed one hundred dollars per million. So, any discussion? I would just add that the rate is that the board approved our organizational meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and announces. Before we move on down the agenda, just want to recognize Councilmember-elect Mark Stewart, who's in the audience this evening. Congratulate you on your win. And also, if you have the time, we have an executive session, and you're welcome to join us during that executive session. So, nice to see you. Next item on the agenda is the number seven, Southland Fire Company, all in favor? I have received a request for, from the fire company, to close part of Route Nine in an effort to provide for a successful parade from, I believe it's Bluebird Road, all the way to River Street. And the fire company, there's certain requirements, in other words, an individual who's willing to receive a permit from their state DOT is required to have five thousand, five million dollar insurance policy, which can be achieved through a million dollar per appearance policy and a four million dollar umbrella. And they're well aware of all the requirements for that. However, as part of the thirty-three B special use permit by New York State DOT, it requires municipalities to be in support of it. So I would entertain a motion to in support of the Southland Fire Company holiday parade, where they will conduct it along Route Nine in Town of Monroe, from Bluebird Road to River Street. So, second, any discussion?
Just to be clear, are they still using the same parade route though, from Way of the Street down to River Street? And they, and they just need to close that section of Route Nine while the train's going on? There's a train going to go, that's like two mile, yeah, or three mile, right? It's going to go the whole distance. It's the longest parade we've ever had in Town of Monroe, all right?
Well, they indicated that this is a second Route that was used two years ago. I don't know if that's accurate, but I didn't have time to follow up, so I might have to go with.
It's going to be a little tip drop after, right?
So, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries and announces. Item eight on the agenda is in relation to sewer treatment alternatives that the town is exploring, which will require completion of secret and a resolution. We're looking at part two and part three. And counselor, do you want to just resell where we need to go?
I can. I note that project engineer Don Rose is in the audience today. I'm happy to have him take in a little bit of the Burge pair, parts two and three, as well as narrative. So, Mr. Supervisor, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Mr. Rose.
Yeah, sure. Just give the mechanics of what we're doing briefly, and what we need to do this evening to move forward. So briefly, it's a consideration of an alternative that would redirect discharge from district block extension five to the county system. The route of that discharge would go along local roads and connect it to the Sertory County System at Bowled Road. As a part of the consideration of that alternative and potential ramp application, it requires seeker to be completed. This is, it was preparation of part one, which you acted on last meeting, declared yourself as lead agency and issued coordinator review. You're lucky enough to get coordinator review responses back, so you don't have to do a special meeting. Hearing none. No one has contested your request to become lead agency. And you'll see in front of you parts two and three, which goes through your part two of the EAF, consequences of the alternative. The entire alternative is to be built within roadway pathways, which are pretty much clear of environmental issues. And the issues where we have to cross a water course would be your own number to avoid any potential environmental issue. So it's pretty much as clear as I can get, and we even were able to receive no effect letter from SHO because it was that straightforward. You're building a logging area that's previously disturbed. So in front of you is the seeker acting for you to determine whether or not it's a negative declaration of significant environmental impact.
So we can go down to the list, or, and I want to handle it, I can read each box. I can tell you that the impact on land, the recommendation is that there's no impact on land. What is that?
Mr. Supervisor, if you want, you do have the stuff in front of you. All of the questions have been answered as no or small impact, as based on the information prepared by the Burge and SHO, no effect letter, and coordinated review. So I'm happy to go through and ask each of the questions for the public if we'd like to, or we can go through if you accept them as identified. And again, this would be a determination of no significant environmental impact, if that's what the board decides. You will note that there is, this is a long form, because this is a type one action, that part three has an attachment to it, which is summary of specific reasons why it's not an environmental, environmental significant project. Again, you can read those if you like, but you have them all in front of you. The board is happy with what you have in front of them, which will of course tend to be available to the public thereafter. We can have a resolution in front of you determining no environmental impact, no significant environmental impact, and a negative declaration.
Okay. Okay, what do you mean? Yeah, I was talking about, I was compared through most of it already. Okay?
So then you do have the resolution there in front of you. Lead man.
Seems like pretty good.
Resolution, Town Board, Town of Monroe, subject seeker determination regarding the county connection for sewer district number one, extension five. Whereas the Town Board has had an opportunity to review the county connection for sewer district one, extension five, which includes the installation of sewer infrastructure to connect the Sertory County Sewer District. And whereas the Town Board has reviewed part one of the long environmental assessment form prepared by the Burge group engineer for the project. And whereas by resolution dated October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, the Town Board declared itself lead agency for this type one project under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, hereafter referred to as seeker. And whereas the town sent lead agency designations to all interested and involved agencies, all of whom have agreed to the town's designation as lead agency for this action. And whereas the town has reviewed parts two and three of the EAF as to whether the action will have any significant adverse environmental impacts. And whereas after reviewing parts two and three, the Town Board determined that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts, and a negative declaration should be issued. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board hereby determines that there is no significant environmental impacts and that a negative declaration be issued. Be it further resolved that the attorney for the town is directed to file a negative declaration with the environmental board skeleton.
Thank you. So at this time, I maintain a motion to that proposed resolution. So, second, any discussion?
Yeah, you know, I have to start down and start with, I expect to be able to refer this forward, is that, you know, it's disappointing to work there a lot of hours trying to find sewer testing. And I've got to vote for this. But once again, I think this, this is something that we probably should have, you know, sewer testing is probably something we should have looked at when the referendum to sewer testing in 2017, in the 18th of last year with the city. And we're stuck now, where we've got to do something. We have to do something, we have to go forward with something. So I will vote on this, I'm not completely voting on it, but it's something we have to do, we have to follow our options, so I won't be voting.
Any discussion? No, but as a member of the board who was part of this process from the start, I do feel as if we've been trying to negotiate with the city of Glens Falls, with this entire process. So to characterize what we've been doing as not negotiating way of development, I would say it's a mischaracterization. But we are, I think, making a break move for the future of the sources in the Town Row for fifty to seventy-five years down the road. So those are my comments.
I would just like to add that we as a board have a responsibility to protect the interests of, whether it's taxpayers or ratepayers here in the Town of Monroe. And I can tell you, for one, having been personally, that has had multiple meetings with the city of Glens Falls, I will not allow Town and Row to be held hostage to these outrageous proposed fees and penalties per a new agreement with the city of Glens Falls without providing an option to our ratepayers, number one. Number two, the reason that- Number two, the reason that we're in this position, the reason that we're in this position is because previous boards, under a different administration, sold out our town. They sold the capacity for developers to put apartments through a P U D process in this community that took the capacity that had been earmarked for economic development for the future of town row along our commercial quarter and wiped it away. So uh I support this resolution this evening. Uh, I'm gonna do everything I can uh to ensure that uh we get the best deal for the ratepayers in uh in our various uh sewer districts. And uh I'm committed to uh moving forward uh with a potential tie into the county wastewater treatment plant, where this town will have a say in the policies that are put forward by that agency. Not somebody where we take whatever's handed to us from another county, and I'm not gonna do that. So that's my position, and I encourage board members to vote in support of it.
I have in front of me, I have in front of me a contract that's since two thousand eleven, gave it ten years to negotiate capacity. Thing ran out of line, the town row was negotiating capacity in August. Now, it it seems to me like we dropped the ball, is what we did, we dropped the ball on the house end. I always put myself in, I wasn't on a board for a lot of this time. But I was naive enough to think that in two thousand seventeen, when this referendum passed, when we started with capacity, capacity was available, we had the opportunity by the past city of Glens Falls, we failed to do that. And you talk about past past administrations, you were part of those past administrations.
Actually, uh, yes, I was. Uh, I was not the CEO of the town, was a council member, as you are a councilman. And when that contract came up for negotiations, it was supervisor Jamie that was sitting here in this seat. And I asked numerous questions, and I was lying to him on the record. And I made my decision based on the information that he provided to us, and we did not receive the copy. Or at least I didn't receive a copy of what we were voting on. And that's the way that business is now, I would not do business that way. And we're doing everything transparently, and just so you know, I was negotiating with the city well before August. Any other discussion?
In fact, in two thousand seventeen, we negotiated, you were supervisor since two thousand seventeen, and it was not negotiated until two thousand twenty.
And uh, so do you believe we done that capacity today?
I know we had the limited capacity.
Oh, and do you think we have?
Yes, we do have.
Okay, uh, rest of the case. Any other discussion? On favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item ten on the agenda, transfer station. I do have. Oh. So I entertain a motion that the Town Board hereby direct the attorney for the town to inform the city of Glens Falls uh that the town intends on exercising its option pursuant to section fourteen point oh two, the facility agreement between the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Glens Falls and the Town Row as amended by the amended facility agreement dated August twenty-one, two thousand eight, to renew the agreement for a term of ten years on the same terms and conditions. And I would entertain a motion to that resolution. So, second, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, um, I will again be voting against, I'll be voting against. Um, I think we have to follow our options open also, we can talk about the great city of Glens Falls. The cost is less than nine or ten million dollars, that's the cost is to go to the well, just to have a seat at the table.
Any other discussion? Uh, to be clear, that was not factual, it will not cost town row any dollars.
It will cost taxpayers, taxpayers of the United States of America, the state of New York and the town of Monroe. Nothing's true.
It will not cost the town of Monroe many dollars.
No, it will cost the taxpayers, federal taxpayers, state taxpayers, if we get it, if we get a grant and taxpayers of town row, it could cost millions of dollars.
Any other, any other discussion?
No.
On favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, now I am ten on the agenda as a transfer station. I received some information from uh our transfer station, from a transfer station employee. An individual stopped by that's wanting to uh call out our compost. Uh, we have a proposal from O'Connor Realty, doing business as uh Connor and Sand and Stone from Glens Falls. Uh, says we hereby submit specification estimates for hauling compost. Uh, we will provide all trucking labor, equipment to load, remove both new and old compost from your transfer station at our expense. Uh, I don't believe that we did an R P M. Uh, but this individual stopped by. And uh, I I said I'd bring the board for this question. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is on it, it does have value, I will tell you that. Um, I'm not sure where you wanna go. Transfer station committee, how are we getting space down there, we need this space.
I mean, I'm okay referring to the transfer station and get this recognition. We can bring another number of board meeting.
Yeah.
That would be sound good.
Right, uh, item eleven. Uh, we have a couple items on your water department. Uh, the first one is the board will need to accept the resignation of Christian Mechanic, uh, who submitted resignation on November fourth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and basically I'll read it to you, I, Christian Mechanic, as of eleven fourth, twenty-one. Put in my two weeks' notes, I am Christian Mechanic. So that means the uh his last day of employment would be November seventeenth. So I think now that, except it, what do we gotta have to accept?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, accepted.
Second, on favor? On favor?
I have it.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, so what that does is creates an opening um opening uh in our water, water sewer department. And uh I know the personnel committee has interviewed uh a few individuals, I believe, uh, and I've interviewed some as well. And uh, at this time, I would recommend uh hiring Jeffrey S. Dickinson as a laborer uh full-time for the water sewer department uh at a pay rate of twenty-four dollars per hour effective November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the position is going to be a provisional one for a six-month period and subject to successful completion of a background check and pre-employment physical within two-week period from the effective date. Motion to approve. Second, any discussion?
The candidate is a strong candidate, as mentioned, he was interviewed by personnel committee, comes with experience and carries some certifications that are currently installed for him, so. It's a, it's a step in the direction, and he's a strong candidate.
Does he have any licenses there?
Yeah, he's got.
Yeah, he's got.
Oh, okay.
Quite a few. Any other uh discussion? On favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, in the interim, uh, I have reached out to the Town of Wilton Water Sewer Authority. And uh, the Town of Monroe uh is now uh operating under the license of their director. Uh, and we will have uh I I think it's a good thing for the Town of Monroe, uh, and uh I've had several conversations, I know council member uh Ben Tassel uh toured our facilities with uh company drivers, his name is Mike Mooney. And uh, he came along with one of his licensed operators. It was Robert uh Panchero, Panchero, Panchero. Uh, and uh, these individuals, I can tell you, Mike uh does a phenomenal job. I think he's worked thirty years, nearly thirty years with the Town of Wilton. Uh, he is a licensed operator as well. And uh, he would very much like to uh have a workshop with the Town Board uh to review what he saw when he came uh up here and did a tour uh of our facilities. Uh, I think uh some recommendations he uh will come up with will are sorely overdue. I think it'll make the Town of Monroe more efficient. Uh, but in the interim, uh, I would entertain a motion to bring uh them on uh as we go through this transition on how we're going to shape that department. Uh, one thing that he said today when we spoke, which I am very interested in, uh, he felt that based on his tour of our operations, what we do, um, we don't need any more than one licensed operator. Uh, if we have a contractor and standby that can handle emergency breaks and things like that. So that will be something that he will be discussing with the board uh in the near future. So at this time, uh, I would entertain a motion uh specifically, whereas the New York State Department of Health requires public drinking water assistance to be administered by a properly licensed water plant operator pursuant to N N Y C R subpar five dash four. Uh, that is resolved that the town supervisor is authorized to sign a contract subject to review and approval by the town attorney for the town with Michael Mooney, Director of the Wilton Water Sewer Authority at a rate of seventy-five dollars per hour, and Robert Camparo, uh licensed operator, operated at a rate of fifty dollars per hour to provide all necessary oversight to ensure the Town of Monroe Water Sewer Department complies with all relevant laws and the New York State Department of Health regulations on as a new basis. So uh, this doesn't mean that they're going to be in the town every day for eight-hour days. Uh, they will be providing the oversight of our personnel uh that are here. And uh, obviously, uh, should it need a rise, they will be here. Uh, and this is open ended, we'll get more details of everything they're willing to do for us in the future. Um, and I think that'll be discussed in the workshop, which he's hoping that we can get together in the next three weeks or so. So, so uh, I would entertain a motion to that resolution. So, second, any discussion?
Just comment that, as you mentioned, the travel with all the individuals, they're very knowledgeable. They're familiar with the equipment we uh we operate, we live with, it really gives an understanding of our our system. And uh, Christian did a good job sharing. Great, look forward to uh knowledge that they can bring to the table as we continue to develop that tomorrow.
Great, thanks, uh, thanks for that. Any other discussion in the house? Hearing none, on favor? Perfect, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So today, we received an in-councilor's copy of the petition for a water.
So I was coming, I just opened the traffic.
Will be taken, I received the latest, like the second. Um, they're looking to be added to the agenda at a next available meeting. Obviously, it might not be done this evening because uh it was coming in twelve hours, so eleven hours. Uh, so we'll be taking that, I'm not making it aware that it's in relation to Jacobus Farms subdivision. We can talk about that in the next quarter.
Will we give our engineer?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And special counsel, I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
That's all I had for water department, uh, agenda item twelve, supervisor items. Uh, just a few uh things. Uh, I'm making the board aware that I received the revised, particularly the notice to close the highway, which is the uh Fortsville Road, uh, as you know, doing bridge replacement, I think this is North French, just some kind of, yeah. In there, uh, and with all the reins that we got, they got a delay, putting the box covered in there. So I think they're just gonna start paving this week and shortly after that. So uh, they are required to provide the town and other municipalities certain services fire and that, things like that, of notice. And what they're saying now is that uh, uh, they hope to have it open by November thirtieth in the month. So, that's, you know, we're just. I forget about everything. I think it was uh August. Uh, when I update the board, uh, the standby vendor here at Town Hall, uh, we had received a quote from Milton Kapp, and our highway guys looked at it, uh, indicated that they could do the repair. Uh, if they got parts, we reached out uh to Milton Kapp, I think Paul reached out. And uh, it turns out that the uh work that needs to be done is not applicable to that one. So we don't know exactly what needs to be done to it, we're working to get that work uh repair order. And when we get that, we we already have authority to provide a resolution to purchase the parts. Um, and we can have work done. I don't understand what happened, I'm trying to look at it.
Yeah, so what?
Pete, Pete's not very happy, oh, it was Pete, I'm sorry, it wasn't Paul, it was Pete that uh picked up.
The, the, the words that they said, they done to it.
The, yeah, it was not, not take care of the issue.
I guess our guys looked at it and did a little more research to see if it might have been, not with the same angle, and still and it wouldn't have fixed or, I think it's, I don't know, a real cheap fix. And I think it said there was a disaster going on there, but uh, I was just, I guess, yeah. So, so Pete's on top and he's waiting for more information from Kapp.
Uh, so I I wanted to bring up on the supervisor items. Uh, I received correspondence again today from Nexian.
Not today, I got a couple days.
So, so I'm not sure exactly what they're looking for, looking for are utility use across one of our lots, is that what people?
They are, and they are also looking for us to give approval on their plan, their final plan. My gosh, the word.
Provided and stuff?
No, 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 they haven't even prepared us the information.
This time, it does have like, what for town received.
Well, I didn't have that.
Oh, so it came in my email yesterday.
No, I didn't have that.
Um, you are most of them, Travis Mitchell, Tim Martin, aren't you? Listen, so we'll make sure to get happy with it. Uh, as you know, they're pushing you down the agenda. Uh, I I personally am not in favor of utility by the ways on town property. Um, you know, I don't think we, it's good practice, we haven't done it in the past. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I think it came up once before, and the Town Board was not there.
With this project.
Yeah.
Right, they went down and looked like some property, right, Travis, to see? Yeah, I walked around, I walked around, I was, you know.
So it was either that and maybe. So is it that? And maybe, I'm not sure if that's ever the same thing then?
There is important a different spot, but still on, it's on a paper road that the town owns. And that's part of the issue too, is that there's paper road. So Paul needs to be involved in that. If the town wants to move forward and give them that easement over the big town paper road, you have the authority to say, don't just gravel this or access it. Put it to town in specifications in case the town wants to open up that area.
So in general terms, I had had conversations with respective some industrial parks that are interested in that paper road. So board needs to be aware of that. I think it has to be something that we take into consideration. Obviously, we have people looking at our industrial park, we have projects for planning board. So there's a lot of moving parts on that. You know, we have to look at it globally, not just that one, that is one project that's come before. So I'm gonna turn this, I'll make sure to get a copy of it. And we'll have to talk about it and so forth and get brief then. Exactly what they're looking for and what may be going on.
Yeah, my understanding is they want three things then. They want the utility easement. They want the pilot agreement. And they want the board to approve the decommissioning.
Yes.
Plan.
Which we, we haven't gotten that yet.
No, we have all the comments. They've made all the changes. There are a couple of things in the decommissioning plan that they're unwilling to do, so the board needs to discuss that. That the engineers have suggested should be done.
All right.
Aren't.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I think it's a little premature to get this on the agenda. And that's all I have for supervisor items. Under committee reports, I think council member Noonan, you have received a request regarding substitute crossing guard. That's a personal committee. Did you get that? Anyway.
Yeah, I have. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't contacted the committee yet.
Okay, so we did receive a application for substitute crossing guard. I will get it to personal committee for review and possible action. Or Mr. Recommendations?
Yeah, I have, I have.
More to go. That's all I had on committee reports.
There's first thing. Roll solid stuff. They got all that rush shipped out. And the highway parts taken load after load after load down there. So that's cleared up pretty well. And the bulldozers, they bulldoze all that compost that would have gotten involved. And if we can get some of the, some of the kind of stuff, we're gonna get that back in the, because we can't hold down there. If it's a grant, it's not, clearing that out looks good.
So are we saving those ships down in the river? Is that what's going on? Where are they going?
The water path down there.
Okay. So, so we have money in the budget to secure county grants for paving the trail along the river. Any ships that would be used on the non-paved course of like on the side? I don't think they're using along the river. That was.
I think Mike said that they took some down to the wreck.
Well, I've seen.
Yeah, they took some down to the wreck. I don't know where else it may be.
I think they definitely took some down the river. Cause I went down one day and watched a break and I was.
Chips from them?
Or, geez, I don't know. Like, gate was open, so I started driving down while some trucks were coming this way. Backed up pretty quick, but, so I know they were dropping something off down there. Down by that old water plant that's no longer there. So, so the compost had, it's something we can legally just give away. You know, maybe transportation months, come up an idea for an RFP. We put it out there, you know, figure out what we want to keep for ourselves. Or. Description or. Yeah, they, they, they just want to take. Yeah. That's all I have. Anything else under commission? So I do have to have a brief executive session to discuss the work history of a unnamed town employee.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
Can we also add a discussion on current litigation?
Yes. So an update on current litigation?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right, I'm gonna invite a town engineer into portion of our discussion on updated litigation.
Yes, that's a good idea. Yes.
And so entertain a motion in an executive session for those purposes and ask that the town roads be invited or town engineer into that.
As well as council member.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, council member. So. All clear?
All right.
I oppose. Motion carries again.
Yeah.
You all set, Liam?
Yeah.
All right, we are coming out of executive session like a record where you'd like that no action was taken in executive sessions. And so that takes us to item 15 on the agenda, which is other business. Do you want to have any?
I've got a couple of quick things. One, one is, thank you people for hanging off during an executive session. I was just wondering, I know the last two or three meetings you've had people commentate and hang out and, you know, speak. And our executive sessions have been dragging on and on. I just wanted to suggest that we couldn't move the privilege of the floor up a little bit, at least before our executive session. Because executive sessions, you know, I've learned a lot, sometimes it's five minutes, sometimes your people go up to half an hour.
Yeah.
And I can say that I think it'd be more fair that the people want to speak and move it up. Like I said, it wouldn't just occur in the executive session.
Well, the supervisor puts the agenda together and we used to have the privilege of the floor up early in the agenda. And, you know, what we found is, you know, the legislative portion of the agenda, which is, you know, the day-to-day activities that we're responsible for, you know, started getting pushed later and later into the evening because the public portion became the dominant part of the meeting. So at this time, you know, we used to have warnings that would go to one o'clock, two o'clock, before I was supervisor. And I work very hard to make sure our meetings are no longer than an hour and a half at best. So I'm okay with it being worse than the agenda because, you know, we do a good job of getting to the agenda. And I don't think that it's an issue of that.
I hate to see people who want an opportunity to speak leave because our executive sessions go on and on and on. You know, and I'd just like to see, I'd like to see participation. I'd like to see a lot of participation. I really haven't received some of that at war. I think we get towards the year, one or two here. So I don't think it would really cut into our, to the substance of our meeting if we moved it up just before the executive session. I think, and I think it's fair to our record to be able to commit and speak and not have to go outside the hall for, I don't know, like a month. You know, sometimes, like I say, it's five minutes, sometimes it's 35, 40 minutes. But I just think it'd be, you know, more beneficial to, to be able to speak at the end of this thing before the executive session.
Thank you. Any other questions? So now it is time for the privilege of the floor.
Yeah, yeah, I want to, I want to.
No, you're being delayed.
And, I'll just be a second. I'm going to bring this up again about the last one. I'd like to set a workshop for a similar, some of the law. Like I said last time, I think if you do, well, I would go set some, I'm sitting down, hammer our differences and get this law in books. So I'd like to set, you know, set date, whatever, so we can have another, another workshop. We can sit down, ask this thing out.
But I still have a lot of time for, of reviewing the file for, for, it's actually, it's very extensive. It's really inside that whole meeting. So I, I actually knew a little bit of my time as a board member, before the board members. But then I also think privately, hopefully, it helps my life. I'll just be pretty quick because I don't think you're taking your decision before, you know, you might get a combination of it. Cause me boss.
Once again, this is where we're in, the third year of this process. And I certainly don't think you should have taken that long. I think I would respect, not only the people, like I said last time, the people who want to take advantage of it slower, but the people who have chimed in and talked, you know, one way or the other of issues. And I believe that, you know, we've got all kinds of information. I can't give any more information, maybe, I really don't. And to keep pushing this thing out, pushing this thing out is just crazy. But once again, it's up to the rest of the board.
Well, at this time, it is privilege of the floor. Any member of the public who wishes to be heard, you have three minutes. And please state your name for the record and your address. Yes. Per, per basis.
That's just about right.
And so we're just standing.
Come on up to the.
So my name today is Dan Kemp, my name, as I, I need to go through the road. Wherever that is.
Yeah.
And I'm here on that instant that I'm at a facility. So I was wanting to call that 911. And it was bad. I called 911, my wife went out first, I know, the smoke. And she came back, and she's glad to agree that her lungs, her eyes. So I went out, thinking, gee, what's going on out there tomorrow? Make sure there was no, my house wasn't burnt, that's how much smoke was out there. Very, very bad. So I get back in and I call 911. The walls were on, I said, my house is not fire, there's some kind of smoke out there that's not good for your health. After that, I called my neighbor, Cliff. I didn't know what was going on. And so we're waiting for the fire to burn. I believe it was the smallest, smallest fire for us, I'm not sure what I looked in the world. So when they came, they had no idea what was going on out here. A chief came and introduced himself and said, well, that's not what burned, that's not what burned, it's small. I said, wow, it's probably your gas. He said, something to the effect, well, that seems a little far stretched, but. So I explained to him, because we have a relative that works in a correctional facility. And they were doing exercises up there, and he said, oh, there is. He doesn't do it anymore. So I said, something's going on out there, and it came down through. I'm sure they're doing an exercise up there. So basically what happened was I just came after that. But my neighbor was talking to him, I don't know where. I'll get back and then search around my house. I think we found that, that's most common town. They had a gas mask in it too at the time. So I said to the other one, I said, look, this is what it is, I'm pretty sure this is what it is. Just want to make sure that, you know, I already know where it was going on out there. Second time, I believe first time was a summer, two summers ago. They're doing an exercise up there. And they're actually at the Torrey, Grace Cottage. Something else happened, that same thing, but I never came down to our place. Can you imagine all that smoke? From down, I mean, it was acres, I mean, I own 250 feet of rope ranch. And it probably went down three or four houses, each owned about 250 feet. So it went to the south, and it went to the north. About three or four houses, so here, 750,000 feet each way. Why it happened, who it was, there's nothing that you can do. That was out of this, not going to happen again. Everything else. We also have the state troopers up there at the tar pits. Up there in the field. It's wild, they've done a couple hours at a time. Just totally relaxing, just repetitive. The boats. Why, I mean, you know, we have a neighborhood here.
Yeah.
Why isn't that facility doing that stuff?
So, so your time has just expired. Did anybody else want to speak on the same topic?
Yeah.
Because I'll be happy. Definitely, I appreciate it. I'm going to share this.
Okay, my name's Cliff in here, I'm in the 25th, there's a road right next door to the end. I called Ted. I talked to him considerably and said that I was going to not do anymore. I wanted to hear from the board and wanted to have minutes taken that we are concerned. Because the sheriff had called me, but actually I called him back. He was going to call me back the next morning. And he said to me that there had been an accident, but it was nothing to be concerned about. So I don't, I take that as meaning, you know, don't worry about it. But if it happens again and there's small children playing, there's small children in the neighborhood. If they're playing out there and they get hit with tear gas, it's not going to be, it won't be the end of the year. So just, I'm wondering, have you heard anything or done anything? Or what, what is your, what have you done at, at this point?
Yeah, so as I indicated to you, that even, I was made aware about how the inwards response.
Right.
Has, I'm notified that, as chairman of the board, I get all notifications. And that there was an incident and they were investigating it. And I think it was being reported on the news the other night, the next morning, that there wasn't a lot of information coming out from the department of correctional, about community supervision. And so I did reach out and was successful in talking with Assistant Commissioner Alyssa Coolidge, with docs, reports directly to the commissioner. And, you know, I expressed your concerns and the neighbors' concerns about what had happened and how we, you know, they said, well, we do regular training up there, we do it at all the state's correctional facilities. And I said, well, you know, we should be notified as a municipality that this is going on, in case, you know, I get calls on it. And she said, well, we did notify the state troopers. And I said, well, that's nice, that's not a state agency, but I wasn't notified, nobody in town rose to that. Prior to talking with her, I did talk with the sheriff, Sheriff Zerlo, and they were made aware of it. So we listened back and forth, I was looking for updates, she was traveling with the commissioner. And I think I relayed this to you, that they have now committed to not only notifying the troopers, but the county sheriff as well as supervisor of the town prior to when those training events are going out. They do about, I think they do about 30 a month there. But I said, you know, it's a problem of, you know, personal welfare and safety when, you know, an action that's happening on one piece of property impacts others on another piece of property. And they say, yeah, it was, it was a weather event and I guess it was a temperature surge. And so, I don't know, tear gas, I think is heavier than air, I'm not sure. And so that's why I came down to the valley, off the mountain anyway. And unfortunately, the way the topography is, that's why I came up along Old Saratoga Road. So they did not commit to no longer doing any training. They, they did say that they would, they would notify us when that type of training is to occur again. And I believe that means quick response with, with tear gas. And I haven't been notified.
Just tear gas, that's what they're going to notify you about?
Yeah, because that's what the issue was coming down to. As far as firearms training, target practice, that occurs on correctional property all across the state. And they will continue to do it. And they said it's not just private corrections that use, there's federal law enforcement that does as well.
Okay. And we have minutes in the meeting.
Everyone's being recorded by Zoom and it's being recorded, the audio's being recorded. And a clerk will be making minutes of you.
Thank you very much.
You get it. Thanks for coming. Yep.
That's wonderful.
Sure. Well, I spoke to the agency in charge of the property, and that's, that's the information. You can reach out to, you know, your state senator, which is Senator Jordan. Your assembly member is Kerry Werner. And, you know, make them aware of the, of the issue. I have spoken with them, I have written to them, they know about it. But one thing I learned working for the legislature, they will respond to multiple complaints on the same issue and attempt to resolve it. So my recommendation would be to, you know, make letters of concern to them. Kerry Werner and Senator Jordan. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming here.
Thank you for coming. I wouldn't say that, because I think that would be in my favor right now. Oh, only this is very simple.
Second. Hold on, this is still on, remember that, everybody?